I'd like to call this City of Marine City Commission meeting to order on Thursday, March 21st, 2024 at 7:45 PM. And I'd also like to thank everybody who waited patiently for us while we finished our special meeting. And now can we have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson, here. Commissioner Hendrick, here. Commissioner Clausen, here. Commissioner O'Brien, here. Commissioner Rorick, here. Commissioner Ross, here. Mayor Van De Bosch, here. City Manager Atkins, here.
Under item four, approval of the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Under item five, for presentations, proclamations, and recognitions, we have none. Onto item six, for public comment, anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name, limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, we will follow up as necessary. And please remember to address the Commission when you speak and myself as a judge. Who'd like to speak?
Dave Devlomick, I'm Anna Mayner and Commissioners. I just want the last meeting that we had here, where the reports were given, it was just so good to see how the city's working together. And like I said, I've been here for some time. Employment for the municipality for Marine City for so many years, and then another employer, and now F&amp;V Operations. And again, I just want to say on the operations end, I'm just grateful, I'm thankful, I want to say thank you. Whenever we need anything down there at the plant, you guys make it happen. And so, it's been really good working with Jeff this past, probably eight months now, huh? And City Manager, and again, I just want to say thank you for making sure we have what we need down there at the water plant.
Thank you.
Mike O'Frank. Very briefly talk about the marijuana thing, because I know it's kind of being swept under the rug again. For the people at home that don't quite realize what's going on with that whole thing, you know, it kind of looks like the Commission's making an effort to respect the fact that they threw a town hall for the town. Half of the people showed up at that town hall and supported the marijuana issue. And half didn't. So it's 50/50. So the Commission's up here trying to ride the line, trying to appease both sides. But really, they're kind of pissing off both sides. Because on one hand, you guys are trying to pass an ordinance while, you know, the church group and all their merry band of friends don't want it. So you're pissing them off. And then, on the other side, you have an ordinance crafted in a way that leaves one piece of property for the dispensary to go, one. And that piece of property has to be split up into multiple parcels in order for it to be used. And not only that, but a long driveway has to be built. So there's like all these perfectly obvious impediments to actually wanting dispensaries here. Stop being so soft, just say you guys don't want them, stop playing games. Be strong, make decisions, that's what your job is. But you guys keep kicking the can down the street, trying to appease everybody, just do something. The apartments, so for the Commission members that aren't aware of the planning Commission meeting that just happened, the apartments are moving forward. These are bad people. These are not good businessmen. I have a feeling our City Manager is very aware of it too, considering he lives 10 minutes down the road from them in Bath Township. Thomas Braekey probably went back pretty long ways, no? Weren't involved in any of the St. Clair deals. So, there's a lot of webs of different LLCs and such that the RT Group chooses to organize their business, because they have so many lawsuits. Because Thomas Braekey, who started the business with Kenneth Fowler, is a felon. Why is he a felon? For the misappropriation of federal housing funds. Are these the business people that we want here? I don't think so, I wouldn't want them here. I also wouldn't want business people around here that are using price fixing software to make what they should charge for rent in conglomeration with all the other big area landlords. And proof of that is, I mean, I got an article here. So, in a lawsuit that was filed in Washington State, it's a class action lawsuit against Yardi. Yardi is the name of the software that these companies use to price fix their software. The lawsuit alleges that the competing management companies essentially outsource pricing decisions and unit supply to Yardi by using the company's software, which eliminated competition between the companies, instead of competing for customers by offering discounts. So what they do is they just set these rates amongst multiple companies. And then I just found a job listing for MRD Apartments, which RT Group is above MRD Apartments. MRD is actually the name or the main apartment company under RT Group. So they own Dutton Estates in St. Clair, they own Grace Stone Estates in St. Clair, $1,200 or $1,200 a month for one bedrooms. I mean, is that what we really want here? $1,200 a month for a one-bedroom, 700-square-feet apartment? Is that really what we need for our citizens here? It doesn't really seem like it. Seems like we need something a little bit affordable, maybe something people can buy, instead of just giving more wealth to these giant conglomerate, huge, multi-state rental companies. This company has 13,000 units in 10 states. 13,000, it's huge, 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 huge. Like I said, not good people. Felons using price fixing software. And they're even putting the price fixing software on their job applications, like on LinkedIn and such, that they're looking for people that have experience using the software. Not good people. We don't need those kind of business people here. We need people that actually have some kind of ethics and morals. These people, Thomas Braekey, his son Rutger Braekey? No, they don't have ethics or morals at all. They have no issue with overcharging people rent and keeping units empty for the very reason of driving up the price of the other units. That's how it works, that's how the software works. Mr. O'Brien, look into it, it's not a lie.
Anybody else? Public comment? Okay. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve City Commission meeting minutes of March 7th, 2024?
So moved, support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Now can I have a motion to approve the City Commission closed session meeting minutes of March 7th, 2024?
So moved, support.
Any, no, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Now to item eight, under the consent agenda. We have the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report. We have the monthly departmental activity reports. We have the business license for Blackbird Boutique and business license for St. Clair County Community Mental Health. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through D as presented?
I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda letters A through D. Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yep.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rorick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Van De Bosch?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Under nine, for items removed from consent agenda, we have none. Onto 10, financial business, 10A expenditures. That's including payroll of $264,969.72. If I have a motion to approve those expenditures, including payroll, in that amount of $264,969.72.
I'll make a motion we approve expenditures, including payroll, for $264,969.72. Support.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rorick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Van De Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
On 10B, the preliminary financial statements. Can I have a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements as presented?
So moved, support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Great job, Katie.
Okay, on to 10C, reimbursement for sewer overpayment during the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, for Cotreville Township.
Yes, Commissioners, just a reminder for some of you, and for Commissioner O'Brien, this is new. By way of interlocal agreement that we have with Cotreville Township, we provide these services. As part of that agreement, there is an annual study that is done by McBride and Manley to calculate the actual cost. So we generally, once a year, have a true-up. In this case, it is an overpayment from Cotreville Township. So this item is to true-up the cost, as we do annually, based upon the work from McBride and Manley. And there's also a memo included by the Treasurer.
Can I have a motion to approve the reimbursement for sewer overpayment in Cotreville Township in that amount of $74,065?
I'll make a motion we approve the reimbursement for sewer overpayment Cotreville Township in the amount of $74,065.00. Support.
Okay, any further discussion? Get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rorick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Van De Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 11, for unfinished business. We have our engineering firm discussion and selection consideration.
Mayor, Commissioners, again, thank you all for your patience. This has been a several-month process. From the time that we prepared the initial request for qualifications and sent that out, receiving those requests back in, which we had seven very well-qualified firms that responded, and some of this information is a repeat from what's been shared earlier. From that, a further evaluation was done by a committee of three independently and individually to come up with three firms to interview. And again, independently, each of the three reviewers came up with the same three firms in no particular order, which were invited to participate in the interviews that were conducted this evening. I know that they ran a little bit over, but you can see the, I believe, the excitement, the qualifications, and the interest in Marine City from each of these firms, who again, are very well-qualified. You know, unless there is a consensus across the board this evening, I'm not necessarily asking you to make a decision on a firm, again, unless there is a consensus. And then, when we do get to that point, I believe the proper piece of order would be to authorize a City Manager and City Attorney to begin contract negotiations and discussions with the firm and taking input from the Commissioners. But again, very well-qualified, and I know you each had, you know, a number of questions that were asked, and some of those, I believe every firm was proactive and preemptive in a lot of the questions that were asked. But this is an open discussion for the direction that Commission wishes to go. And I think you all understand the importance of us getting an engineer of record onboard, which we did ask, because there was a question of fee schedules. Two of the three firms did provide fee schedules, which you have, which are general schedules of their per-hour rates per services. Those are all dependent on, of course, the scope of the project, the time that's involved. F&amp;V did not have a fee schedule specifically with us. Their basis of how they work is a project budget base. Yes, they do have individually hourly rates, but they basically build a budget for the project and then share that budget before the project is approved, that includes the rates. I did ask, however, that if they could, to please provide us with a rough hourly compensation schedule, and that will be emailed to me tomorrow, and I will share that with you. But generally, you will find that all of the firms are within the same general realm. I believe it was one of the groups tonight that said, "We all talk with each other, we know each other, we work with each other." And for competitive reasons, those rates per specific tasks and for engineers, surveyors, are all within the realm of dollars-per-hour difference. So, it really is on the basis of the scope of services in all projects. But for us, the engineer of record to be able to assist us through current needs, I think it was Mr. Phelan who had stated, you know, in the past two years, there were no road projects that were submitted for funding. There was a lot of money with infrastructure, you know, funds from the federal government that were put out, some state programs. But they were contingent on having what's known as shovel-ready or pre-engineered projects. And we didn't have any identified. This is one of the main reasons why we need to have an engineer of record. The Paser Study. The Paser Study piece, which is the pavement evaluation, is the first step in getting us a ranking of the condition of our streets, being able to prioritize, and then determine whether this is a mill and fill, a reconstruction, a partial reconstruction. Those are all things that are required to be done by an engineer. Those are the lower-cost pieces, but the most important pieces of moving forward. There was an opportunity for a grant program that was sent out at a very short notice last month. I believe there was only about two weeks of time to be able to submit interest from a community to try to obtain some grant funds from the Michigan Municipal League, who was putting the framework together through SEMCOG, and ultimately with partnership from Department of Transportation. I can tell you that we put together a request very quickly, I sent that request, and we were notified yesterday that the City of Marine City will be awarded grant money to cover Paser Study costs. So I don't have a specific dollar amount, I think that's going to be based on how much the study actually cost. That is great news for us. But again, the main reason why we need to move swiftly on getting a qualified firm, because we don't have time to waste. They're, you know, putting together funding for '25, '26, '27 right now. Jeff is at the meetings regularly, and that doesn't mean that money won't come back from 2024. But if we don't have a project, we don't have funding. So, Mayor, back to you and the Commission for open discussion. Again, I think all the firms are very well-qualified, and any one of them would do a wonderful job for the city. And some of them have certainly worked for the city in the past, or currently do.
Just go down the line.
Why does everyone look at me with this thumbs up?
Looking for the most experienced engineer, first comment.
I do have a question, if I may throw it out to the team here. One of the firms is significantly smaller than the others, and is looking at doing maybe more subcontracting than some of the larger ones. Is that an impediment, and how does it serve as an impediment to getting these grants in line and having projects in service if they have to subcontract frequently?
I mean, I can try to answer, generally, it's not necessarily an impediment. A lot of firms use subcontractors. I think the only concern that you have is the availability of those subcontractors to do that work, and what their time schedule is. You know, you've heard and asked the same question of all three firms tonight, of can you handle this work? And we know what their answers are from their firms, but we don't necessarily know where a subcontractor would stand. And does that subcontractor have available time? Are they overburdened? So that is the risk when you have, you know, a subcontractor. And then again, our contract would be direct with the primary engineer of record. There is language in there for subcontracting, but beyond that, we don't have the choice necessarily of choosing the subcontractors. They've already chosen subcontractors. So that's kind of a risk, but I don't think, you know, I mean, these firms have their reputations on the line. They're generally choosing subcontractors that are qualified, because at the end of the day, the onus is on their back to make sure that projects are complete and stay away from, you know, undue liability. I hope that helps.
Thank you.
I'll go, oh, go ahead. Well, let me, I have to put this out first, is that I know people in all three of these firms, along with a couple of the firms that didn't make it here tonight. I've tried very hard not to let any of that influence me, but I just have to state that for the record. I do know people at all of them. It's kind of hard not to, but there's no doubt in my mind that any of them could do the work. I mean, it really, it's, this is a tough one for me, because I think any of them can do the work and would be very successful at it. It's kind of, just kind of almost nitpicking things to try and pick one. The, you know, obviously, the smaller firm, they're smaller, they have more limited resources. But at the same time, they also mention that they are focused on the things that they do best, which from my recollection is water, wastewater, storm sewer, and roads, which is, I think, where the bulk of our work really is for the foreseeable few, at least for a while. Not to say that there isn't other stuff out there, but beyond that, I mean, you have two large companies. Large companies have a lot of resources, but they also move a little slower at times. They have a lot of clients that they have to deal with, whereas a smaller company can kind of tailor themselves to you a little bit. Again, it's not to say one's better than the other, they have pros and cons. Beyond that, I don't know. I mean, I'd love to hear what the rest of you have, you know, thoughts are.
One thing I noticed, Scott gave us a sheet that we could rate them on. Maybe we also, I mean, I used it to rate everybody that I thought. Maybe we use those to turn them in to see how that all shook out, to see what the consensus is using those sheets.
And again, if you're close between two, bring them back in, or if you have other questions, or if it's overwhelmingly, this is the group, then that gives us some direction, so.
I mean, do we have that kind of time?
Well, I-
If we decided at the next meeting, or?
I mean, I think we can safely decide it at the next meeting. I don't want to rush, this is a big, this is a big decision. I don't want to rush that decision, I don't think any of you want to rush that decision, and I don't think any of the firms want us to rush that decision. But I know it's imperative that we be ready to move forward, because it will take a couple of weeks, at minimum, of negotiating contract terms and things like that. And every day is important for us. The other thing too is, you know, Commissioner Bryson, you were right. I mean, our big issues are the infrastructure issues. But for us, we know that we have a Marina development that needs to take place. We know that likely over time, we're going to have to address beach erosion, some park facilities, seawalls, those type of infrastructures, and a historic building that we have that has structural, you know, structural concerns, at least that need to be evaluated and recommended, and ADA accessibility. So, again, there's a lot of those pieces, and I think that that makes it difficult, even more difficult, to just throw out tonight and say, this is the group, because we may have follow-up questions. You may have follow-up questions.
From my standpoint, the follow-up questions I'd have for the latter two firms would be if they, you know, have similar GIS capability. They all mentioned that they do, but that was a particularly neat and tidy, you know, system that the first firm had. And then the only kind of red flag that was thrown up with the first firm was, you know, in my form question here about, how would you work with the, you know, City Commission? And the latter two answered very appropriately, I thought. We would direct all questions through the City Manager, and, you know, only come to you when the City Manager deemed it necessary, et cetera. And the first one said, "We're going to become your best buddies," and, you know, that kind of scared me. I don't know if I'm taking it the wrong way, I mean, I think they were kind of answering in a generically human, you know.
I think all three of the firms are very civic-minded in the sense that they support local activities and those type of things, and are there. I mean, I can only tell you, there's past experience working with, I've worked with all the firms. But with the first firm, they've been around long enough that know the pecking order of how the flow is of things. But any one of the three, I mean, certainly, you know, if there's a question from a Commissioner and they need to be at the meeting, they're going to do that too. So, I think that, you know, the way they answered it, you're right, it kind of seemed like, "We're going to be there, we support this, rah rah rah, and we'll put up a tent, and we'll give you 50 bucks for the maritime days." That's important too, but the job of the day is the most important piece. And I think that they wouldn't be here and have as many clients, any one of the three, if they didn't know that.
And then the only other thing I'd say is, you know, just the fact that one of them has somebody that lives in town is kind of both convenient and, you know, being an engineer, I agreed with a lot of that stuff, right? You see stuff every day, and it just bugs you and you want to make it perfect. So, I think that's, to a degree, a bit of an advantage that we might have, given that situation. But, again, they were all really great.
Yeah, I agree with them. I think any one of the three could handle the job. I had a similar question that Commissioner O'Brien had about the smaller firm though having to subcontract out more. And like you said, it would just depend on the availability of those subcontractors to get the job done. But again, like Commissioner Ross had just said, it is nice having somebody, a lead project manager, right here in the city, very familiar with everything we have here. I think the first one, AEW, I think they had a lot of fantastic things. I really liked their GIS programming too, for our DPW employees, or I even think the fire could use it, you know. Right now, here's water lines, here's your point, you know, everything you need right here, and I thought that was a great program. One other, one question though, and F&amp;V, I mean, obviously, they have done a great job operating our plant and with this water project we have going now and getting us that grant money. Is there any issue with having one engineering firm overseeing all of that stuff? Do we have one firm doing the plant operations, one firm doing this huge $26 million project, and that being the same firm doing all these other projects, or is it better to diversify?
Kind of an engineering monopoly.
Yeah, and there's, you know, there's no real prohibition of doing it. I mean, there are some engineering firms that actually run entire cities, Department of Public Works, and their facilities, and their engineers. But I think checks and balances are important, and those checks and balances can be internal, but often they need to be external as well. And that, I mean, that's a question, maybe another drill-down question to ask them, hey, in this, in these situations, what other communities do you do all of these pieces?
I think they're more incapable of doing all of it, but I just didn't know if that, having that one, creates any kind of problems in the big picture at all.
Yeah, like, I looked at the first one, but the one that showed the map of, they're here, and they're over here, and they're so far spread out. I don't know how they can guarantee us anything, you know, that they're going to be there when they're, when they're on the west side of the state and the north. So, I'm leaning towards the number one, but.
So I think that Commissioner Hendrick had a great suggestion. I mean, I gave to you guys, if you wanted to use them, kind of just a general scoring sheet. Score them on your feeling on these categories, qualifications, experience, blah blah blah, based on the questions, on a scale of one through five. So, if you want to share those at the end of the meeting, I'd be glad to then tabulate those and answer back to you to say, okay, here's the scoring criteria. And maybe that will help drive us to the next discussion, or other questions or answers that you have, you know, for us at the next meeting. Or, I mean, I count pretty quick, we could probably do that now, but I don't want to rush anybody, because you may want to think about it. This is a lot of stuff, and you may want to think through the course of the next few days, over the weekend, you know, okay, I really like this piece. So, and make notes or things like that. That, to me, that's an easy way, and those can be submitted. I can give you the numbers of exactly where they score, and then we can set the direction that we want to go, you know, the next step. I mean, again, I don't think that two weeks is going to make a big difference. The outcome that we need to have is a long-term outcome, so.
Could I almost make a suggestion, kind of piggybacking on that, is could we, could we almost do a deadline? Maybe like, by the time you get into work on Monday morning, give us a few days to ponder it, think about what, you know, all the answers that have gone through. Do our individual scoring plus provide a, are there any other issues, questions, et cetera, that we kind of need a little more info on to make a decision? Get it to you, and then we can follow up at the next meeting, and hopefully.
Yeah. If you get it to me by the end of the day on Monday?
Yep.
Perfect.
Yeah, I mean, it can't drag out, obviously, when you need time.
Yeah, and I mean, and I'll have that, and literally in the next day, I can turn around and have that scoring back to you and summary of questions.
Yep.
When we do a contract with them, how long will the contract be?
So, generally, I mean, I've seen, in my experience, I've seen contracts that start out as an annual contract, just for one year. I've seen contracts that start out in two- or three-year increments, and I've seen them, the max is five years on most. However, every contract has the safety net built in. If there is non-performance, then we have an out, if that firm, you know, wants- out. If that firm, you know, wants to extricate themselves from the city, there is usually a timeframe, a 90-day notice, and things like that. Commissioner Bryson brought up some great points early on in this. There are some other language changes we want to have that. We have ownership of certain products that are done. So, mapping, documentation, those things, that we have the ownership. And I know that the one group that did show the mapping, that mapping was done, that mapping was done on a grant, that's owned by the community. You know, the engineering firm puts the information in, it's owned by the community, and it's, it's mobile. And that's what we need to have, because we don't have that right now. And that's important. So, those kind of pieces, too, need to be woven into any contract, regardless of the term. But, you know, I think that as long as we have a safety net of language in there for non-performance and those type of things, even if we were to start with a two- or three-year term, we have protection for that.
I'd like to raise two thoughts before we move too far away from this. One is regarding the subcontracting availability that we talked about earlier, the team availabilities for these internal companies. A dive team is a unique team. That's going to be fairly busy, I imagine, on where it's going to be deployed, and when, and how often. And so, even though these are internal to the companies, that availability may not be instantaneous. I think parts of it will be. But if we're worried about a subcontracting availability, team availability may be a factor as well. Secondly, and I was going to probably raise this in Commissioner privilege, but I think it's, it's appropriate for this conversation where we're at now. One of the things I was involved in a discussion earlier today is Georgetown University has a policy called the economic, or the Just Employment Policy, which sets standard wages, or like, living wage, for employees at the university, as well as any contracted and subcontracted work, that there's a threshold that has to be met. And I think if we're looking, all three of these companies mentioned at some point having a subcontracting, is that our contracts need to include some sort of clauses around how we want tax money being spent, living wages or anything like this in that conversation.
So, in certain cases, if we're using federal money on federal projects, there are built-in statutory requirements. And I think I referenced earlier, one common was Davis Bacon Act, which is a fair, you know, competitive wage, and it sets a minimum, a wage standard. There are a lot of projects that come out that have these federal funds attached to it and those requirements. So, in part, that has started to be adopted universally. But, you know, again, I think that these firms are, all of these firms are very good on making sure they have a competitive living wage, because they're competitive. They're, I think that Mr. Phelan was, was one of the best to say, hey, I've been with, you know, this company for X amount of years, but I worked for the company that you interviewed first for 14 years. So, it's a competitive piece, but what I like is the safety net. And pretty much, all of the projects that we're using for, for street projects are a great example. That money is coming to us by way of the federal government and the state, more than anything through a gas tax, which have those requirements already embedded in that funding. And there are requirements now from Michigan Department of Transportation that were put in statutorily a couple of years ago to guarantee that. This body, if we're doing a local street project that maybe doesn't have those requirements, can always, through the project contract, require for contractors, subcontractors, those provisions as well. Maybe not so much the firm, but I think that's, that's the biggest bulk of the things, when we actually have those projects and have work being done. We need to ensure that we've got solid contractors performing the work. So, I think there are some built-in protections, but yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to add a little more when we can, either.
All right. So, so what we're going to do is give you the sheets, if we have them, and any other questions by Monday?
Yeah. By, yeah, by, you know, end of business Monday. Every time you get them to me, and I'll put them together, turn them right around back to you.
Okay.
Post days.
Yeah, thanks. Very, three great, three great options.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on now to 12 for new business. 12A, we have the wastewater treatment plant repairs. And Mr. Schmidt with us.
Mr. Schmidt, GPW Superintendent, Madam Mayor, Commission, good evening. I just wanted to kind of update you on where we're at with the numbers. As you know, we have two aerators down in our oxidation ditches at the wastewater treatment plant. I gave you some numbers that, I had received some numbers when we put it out to bid for the work to be done, as well as the parts. However, that was before the second aerator went down. So, I had to send these out again to see what the numbers came back. And I didn't have those for your packet, but I do have them now, because I've heard back from the other contractors. So, the parts for two shafts and two reducers came in at $83,006.16. The lowest quote received to remove and replace said parts belonged to 3C Equipment, coming in at $34,272. And that's almost $20,000 cheaper than the next quote. So, it's, it's pretty drastic difference there. So, the total comes to $117,278.16. And this doesn't include incidentals or any unforeseen issues we may encounter. You know, we're, it doesn't include like, any reimbursement either for in-house work, because we're going to have to build some ramps and stuff like that to get these cranes in to do the work. But we've been lucky enough to receive some ARPA money that will cover the cost for the repairs. I just need your approval to move forward to get the project started. There is a 10-to-12 week turnaround for the, the parts. And then, of course, we have to schedule with the contractor coming to do the actual work. So.
I just want to add on to a little bit of something Jeff had just said. So, I know that Jeff has been working on this for quite some time, and I want the Commission to understand, it's very difficult, because you actually have to have these firms come in and take a look at what our situation is. It's all a custom, a custom design, a custom quote. It's not like this is something we can put a blanket request for proposals out and say, here you go. They actually have to come in. It's difficult to get companies to come in and look at this type of work. Even more importantly, though, is the fact that it's always costly, when you're looking at an older facility and the infrastructure and matching it up to what we already have. When, when we weren't quite sure that the numbers, well, the first numbers that came in were the highest numbers that Jeff had. I reached out and contacted our county commissioner, Mr. Vanabosh, asked him if we could possibly put in a request for any additional ARPA funds. He said, well, send me a request. I don't know whether I can, you know, meet that or come close to it. And late last week, he basically notified me that he felt that he could get a $150,000 carve-out of ARPA funds for us. The paperwork was sent to me Monday to basically submit back to the county to put a hold on that funding. And it's a reimbursement, similar to how we did it with the generator and things, but very appreciative of him carving out of his allocation pot that portion, because he's had a ton of requests. Police chief isn't here tonight. He's requested money. I think the fire department may have requested money. The clerk is here, he's requested money. But this is an important infrastructure piece, and it's a huge piece. And we have that in a carve-out for us. And that, I'm very thankful and appreciative, and I think that that makes this job able to be completed in one fail swoop, instead of having to piece it together.
Do, would you be looking for a not-to-exceed amount? Because obviously, we have some unknowns, cranes, et cetera, et cetera. To give you a little, so we don't have to come back and kind of redo it again here, and once?
Well, being the amount that, that we have received, I would say that not-to-exceed amount would be $150,000.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
What's the company again?
So, Evoqua Water Technologies is the single-source company for the parts. The other company for the actual repairs is 3C Equipment. Keep in mind, there's not a lot of companies that do these type of repairs. So, of the three companies I reached out to, 3C Equipment gave me a bid, as did Titus Welding, which has done work before. They're out of Farmington Hills. And then there was a third company that either was unwilling or unable to do the work, and they withdrew. And those were the three companies that I found that would even consider it.
So, and then this would be a, I'm sorry, sorry, brain's gone today. Would this be a split between 3C and Evoqua, or would it be one that we need to award this to?
Well, they'd be paid individually.
Yeah.
But this, I'm just giving you an overall scope of the cost of the project.
They'd be both doing the work.
Pieces of it, though, correct?
Yeah. One providing parts and materials, and the other providing labor.
Looking how, how to form the motion.
Yeah, I think the motion would be two set, would, I think, I think there'd be three motions. I think one is to authorize the work at the wastewater treatment plant not to exceed $150,000 of ARPA funds. Number two, then, potentially, would be to approve the single-source price with Evoqua for parts and materials in the amount, and I think Jeff has indicated, and it might be, it's in your packet, $83,006.16. Jeff, you have 87,106.16. Is that correct? 87,106.16?
That was the original price that I kind of doubled, just to kind of give us a ballpark. But the price, the actual price came in, I believe, at 83,0616.
Okay. And then the last piece, then, would be the motion for the authorization of labor, C3 Equipment LLC, and that was 34,272.
Correct. All righty. Let's, let's start. Let's make the first motion for the work not to exceed $150,000 for the wastewater treatment plant repairs. Need anything more besides that? Isn't that good enough? Okay?
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Rorg?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Second motion is to approve Evoqua for the parts at a cost of $83,006.16 for the wastewater repair.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rorg?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make the motion to approve hiring C3 Equipment for the repairs at a cost of $34,272 for the wastewater treatment plant.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Rorg?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, I just want to thank everybody for, again, as always, for your support. And these repairs are necessary to keep the plant running efficiently, also to stay in compliance with Eagle requirements. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick request, to send the updated quote, the 83 instead of the 87. If you just had any documentation there.
Yeah, yeah, I can get that to you. As a matter of fact, I put it in the packet for the county, but I'll, each of you a separate packet. With that, what I did-
Just send to Scott. Yeah, I mean, either way.
What I did originally was, I had the first quote to work with, and I just doubled it to give a number. And what they did was, was $4,100.
Package deal, basically.
Yeah. Well, it was $4,100 for basically the freight. So, they did not add that. They just kept the same freight cost for the two. So, that's the difference in the cost. And then what I did, I kind of knew that we were going to need the second one repaired, but I got the first quote without telling them that. And then I asked for the second quote, because there aren't going to be stages to see what they would do.
Sure.
3C dropped it down almost 30% because they're already on site. Titus duplicated the first cost. They just doubled it for the cost. So, it was-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, got it.
Worked out pretty well, I guess, for us.
Yes, it did.
Thank you.
Now, on to 12B, the Moving Walls Project.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, I have some information in your packet, and we do have Jeannie Burris Johnson here to speak on this, and her husband Cory, as well, tonight. There had been discussion several months ago about this Moving Walls Project, and Commissioner Ross had made a connection with Jeannie to me to have discussion. I believe at that point, you were in a grant application timeframe of looking at this project. Since then, a grant was awarded for the creation of these moving walls. So, this project is here tonight. It has been in front of 300 Broadway with a recommendation to bring it to the Commission for consideration. I would tell you, I believe there are really three parts of this project. One is proposal for the installation of the art display walls at 300 Broadway. Then there would subsequently be the use of the teen rec zone area for an art exhibit. And I, and I believe there is a third piece in consultation with city attorney and our city insurance agent, Stephen Saff, that we will need to solidify a management agreement with friends of City Hall, who Jeannie has indicated is willing to be the management partner. But we have no, we have no written agreement. So, we need to take this in three, three different pieces, if the Commission considers doing this. You know, there, there are some impediments that we faced as far as use of the building and trying to separate and segregate the rest of the building, because only one portion of the building right now is, is really ADA accessible and has certificate of occupancy, and that's the teen rec zone area. So, again, I think you have three pieces. Jeannie and Cory can speak probably on the project itself. And, again, moving forward on the project, that project is, is being coordinated by Jeannie, who operates the New Century Art Gallery. Second piece coming forward would be utilization of 300 Broadway Teen Rec Zone, and that would need to be contingent, again, upon a signed management agreement with friends of City Hall, indicating proper insurance, insurance parameters, framework for operation hours, any reimbursement on utilities or those type of things. So, there are a lot of pieces here, but I think that you have to bring it together in this manner to have discussion and really look. And I also, there's, I guess there's a three-and-a-half piece, or a fourth piece. We, at a recent meeting, had commission action that was put forth by way of motion of developing a 300 Broadway plan. So, we just need to make sure this is weaving into that plan. And I guess I kind of defer maybe additional conversation on that between Commissioners Bryson and Commissioners Ross, to make sure all the pieces. So, with that, Jeannie's here, if you would like to hear a little more about the moving walls themselves, and a little bit of the artwork that I threw in here that may be cryptic to you, the specialists in the moving wall world are here tonight.
Jeannie, did you want to get up and talk?
I didn't plan on this.
That's okay.
And thanks for your patience going through all of the other meetings.
Oh, no worries. It's interesting. So, again, I'm Jeannie Burris Johnson. This is my husband Cory. We both own New Century Art Gallery. And this year, we received $30,000 in grant money from American Express and Main Street America. A good portion of what we wanted to do with money involved creating opportunities for artists in St. Clair County, because St. Clair County is a little bit of an opportunity desert for artists. We have been working with other businesses like MC Marketplace and the Painted Toad to put together the Marine City Art Drift. That's one thing that we're doing. I don't know if you've heard about it, but we're asking businesses to adopt an artist for the day, and we're paying for advertisement through WJR, WGRT, CNG Newspapers, to bring people from outside of the county in to come to discover Marine City businesses, and also the artists. But the Moving Walls Project is really the important piece for us. I think in terms of small, medium, and large, as far as opportunities go. And for us, the large opportunity is to have a space where artists can come and display artwork. I used to work at Art Studio 1219. I was the Director of Programs and Operations. And after we closed, there was no place for artists to go. So, this would be a unique and amazing opportunity for Marine City and for artists, to have a place where they can come and show their artwork. And, and also, beyond the artists, you know, I like to use the example of, you know, the- you know, I like to use the example of, you know, the Community Pride and Heritage Museum. You know, what if they wanted to do an exhibition on founding families of Marine City? Those walls would be available. Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, schools, it can be used for everybody in the community. But my main focus is always going to be the artists. That's where I come from. It's what my business is. So, we're asking for you to please approve these walls. We will pay for them. We will build them. The city will own them. We're just asking for you to approve it so that maybe we can have this great opportunity. And thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions about the walls themselves and what that would entail?
No, it makes sense.
No, but the diagrams that were submitted were, the pictures were very detailed.
Relatively basic and, and easy to store.
Thank you.
I've asked questions like, can they be brought through a man door, things like this, and you said it could be facilitated.
Yeah, but the design is so that we have, if we have to, we can take them apart for storage.
All right. I'm all for the arts. We have a family member that does the arts, but I don't have a problem with the use of the teen zone, but the other rest of that facility is not set up for use, and it's not ADA compliant, and we've already gotten hit with one complaint on that, which we had to go through hoops to get out of. So, we cannot authorize the use of that portion of the building because it's not ADA compliant for anything. So, the teen zone's fine, is, if you wanted to utilize that portion, but I don't see how, even with our insurance carrier, we could utilize the old structure.
Yeah, we, we would not be able to use, and again, I spoke with Mr. Saff on this, who represents our, he's our insurance agent.
Right.
We would have to take steps to ensure that there is no accessibility into the other portion of the building.
Yes.
And, and that, that can be done, but again, I think the bigger concern here is, one, there needs to be an authorization of a project, but if, if you're interested in that, but it has to be contingent really on, and I know that Jeannie's done a lot of legwork with Friends and discussion, but again, in speaking with both the insurance agent and Mr. Davis, we need to have a partnership agreement that, bless you, Commissioner, a partnership agreement that ensures this is going to be the organization that is going to oversee this project. You know, building the walls and taking them to the building is one thing, but this is the group that's going to oversee this, and this is the timeframe in which it's going to be done, and here's how volunteers are going to be in, and, and make sure your insurance meets this standard, and we're additionally insured. So, those are the logistical, legal, protected pieces that have to be in play, and, I, I mean, I think that's, you know, the first thing is, you know, does everybody agree? Second thing is, okay, the green light, if given, is contingent in all of these pieces. And again, I, I don't know, on Friends, you've had discussion, but they would have to approve, you know, through their, their organization, that agreement as well.
Would you be looking for a motion tonight to just say, go and develop the, this agree, the, the partnership agreement and bring it back for a final approval?
So, Mr. Davis is familiar with the agreement that we already have in place. We have a partnership agreement, but we do not have a management agreement. So, I think that's the key, is the management agreement, and we, we could draft something if authorized, or have, instruct him to draft something, and that would have to be shared with Friends and then approved. Now, I know the time clock is ticking for you.
Right.
But these are things, again, that, you know, it took a while to get answers on the legal side and then the insurance side, but that, that's where we're at. The other thing is, and again, I want everyone to, to understand, if you, if you do this, you have to put some type of reasonable timeframe in there, because it's, it's moving walls today, but what if there's another project? What if you have another organization that wants to do something else? You're committing to the use of that space, and, you know, so whatever language goes in has to be flexible language, either for a time period or have additional language in if another event comes in. So, there, there are a lot of, there are a lot of nuances. This is new for us. This isn't like, this is the teen rec zone, and you guys have it, and you have it for this period of time. This is accommodating this project. There could be other projects. There could be other groups, and I think it ties in, Commissioner, with your plan.
Yep.
How does this fit into the plan?
Correct.
Because we, we want to have decent use. We want people to be able to donate, to support the renovations of the building. How do we do this in a fair and equitable way for all organizations? So, this is, this is like the first approach.
So, I have kind of two follow-ups, if you will. The, the first is, for me, I, I love the idea. I love the arts wholeheartedly, but I need to see the, the agreement before I could give a final yes or no. Having said that, the only other question I have is kind of almost more, a little bit towards Brian here, is how does this factor in with all of the 300 Broadway Committee deliberations and planning and all that stuff?
Right, so what it would do, and I was just about to mention this even without you bringing it up, but what it would do is show that there's a viable use for the building and that it's being used. That really helps with grant funding, that you show that, look, this city has this need, and we're utilizing it for this, but wouldn't it be much nicer if we had this nicer facility or larger facility or fully accessible facility? So, that's, and that's part of why Jeannie came to myself, Friends of City Hall, and other groups suggesting this possibility even, because it would just, it'd both promote, you know, it seemed like a win-win-win, promote arts in the area, give a building that's presently not useful a use. It could, it could incur income for the building if, you know, the space was rented and things like this. So, it, it actually checked a lot of boxes in the meaningful use of the building and towards the goals that you had asked the 300 Broadway Committee about.
I have another question on this. If, if we're the owners of these boards and we have this artwork on there, what happens if the artwork gets damaged or something happens to it? Who's liable?
That would be covered by your insurance.
So, we're liable?
So, I asked that question of Mr. Davis and Mr. Saff, and this is why the importance of having, we're, we're liable if we take it on solely. However, with a partnership agreement that is already in place with Friends, Friends can do fundraising, which means they could collect fees on this, but they don't have the management piece, and this is why, again, we would have to either amend that agreement or do a side agreement for Friends to be the management group, and then they would insure, they would operate and insure the, the project, the artwork, the whole shot, like a renter's insurance policy. So, we would still have underlying insurance for the building, property liability and those type of things, but this project would be covered by Friends under the management agreement, and then we would be an additional insured on their policy for the management of the, of the project. It would be difficult for us to manage it because, you know, we, we, again, don't, we have limited staff, and we don't have the ability to do that, but a group like Friends was organized for this, and that, I believe is a discussion you've had. We just need a management agreement, that legal piece, not a lease, management agreement protecting us or insurance. There have been recommendations between Mr. Davis and Mr. Saff that we could talk about if we get there, with Friends saying, you also should think about taking on possibly an errors and omissions policy or these little side policies to, to protect them, which ultimately protects us.
So, aside from that, though, I mean, if the space or walls were used for, say, an art fair, that's a special events permit that's separate and has to be covered under its own insurance policy. Arts fairs happen all the time and are covered, right? You have to show proof of insurance, so that could be another protection.
Yeah, kind of the same premise, though. You know, a, a management agreement with insurance or special events, you know, permit from a group with insurance to, to list us as additional insured.
Additionally, additionally, we put together what's called a hold harmless agreement that artists sign, and even in our gallery and every exhibit I've ever done, artists have to sign it. So, that's, you know, the artist saying, okay, we understand that certain things can happen, and we're not going to hold you responsible. So, I don't, I don't think that is as big an issue between having the insurance and having a hold harmless policy.
Well, but we have to cover all the bases for the public.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, the slip and fall kind of thing, I get, but-
The management agreement piece is really the key to-
Right.
To this or any other potential project in the future that Friends may want to coordinate, or, you know, it's Friends for this project. Could be the Chamber, could be anybody else. We have to have that management agreement piece that's approved by the commission and the, the party that's managing.
So, if you only have the availability of the teen center, is that going to be adequate?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's, that's, that's a start, you know? As far as, you know, our grand plans, it would, it may eventually be able to get bigger if the building is available, but this is a good start for us, absolutely.
The building would have to be pretty much rehabbed before you, you know what I'm saying?
There's a lot of issue.
You're talking a lot of money. Yeah.
We're trying to work with Friends, too, to help, you know, get there.
We're trying to work with everybody, because at the end of the day, the building is not supporting itself, and this is a little thing that could get that started, right? You know, we could put those walls in there, start, you know, having exhibitions, people who pay for it, you know, the use of the walls, so that, you know, at a minimum, maybe you're just paying your utilities, but it's, it's like a beginning.
So, so in this respect, we're going to be paying all the utilities also, because when the teen zone was in there, they paid the utilities, they split it off, that was their contract, they did it all.
So, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I, I think the idea is that with the Friends, with Friends managing it, the money that's earned would go towards paying utilities and things like that, so it can begin to support itself.
It would need to be spelled in that agreement.
And, and no offense, if it didn't make enough to support the utilities, then what? Then the taxpayers are going to pay. You see where we have to just make sure we're covering the-
I mean, I almost think your agreement would have to say, here is the amount. You know, there, we know it's a third of the building or a tenth of the building, and we can calculate some pieces to help in that process, because we still have to heat and take care of the rest of the building.
Well, and then we might have cleaning expense, you know, there's-
Yeah, so I think those are numbers that can be easily calculated, to be put into an agreement for consideration.
And, and they're, and Friends of City Hall, they're going to open this, and they're going to run it, and they're-
Yeah, and we're going to help them.
Yeah, we're, we're going to be working with them on that.
I'm halfway putting, I'm halfway done putting together a, a new website for them. They'll be able to book tours or events or anything. All the money will go straight to their bank. It's, I'm making it so it'll be very, very easy for them to, you know, accept appointments and everything.
So, not to stop the conversation by any means, but let me, let's put a motion out there now, make a motion to allow the city manager to negotiate and draft a management agreement to bring back to the commission for final approval.
I would support that.
Okay, motion of support. And the only piece I have for discussion is, and I jumped in there earlier, was I fully support this idea. I think it's, it's a great idea for the arts, but, again, my pieces, the concerns were the same as with Commissioner Hendrick, and, and the same with the plan and that, that we have this management agreement in place, that we're, we're sure on all the liability issues, and everything is good with that.
And, and I'll work diligently in getting this draft together, having it reviewed by Attorney Davis and by Mr. Saff on the insurance side, with all intentions to have this back to you for the April 4th meeting.
And, and I would always suggest that in the future, that we don't cut this so close, that maybe you draft up a, a regular proposal again, now that you know kind of what we're looking for, that you come up with a better proposal, and, because it should come from you guys first to us.
And I think you, you finding a partner in Friends probably was the most lengthy step to, to go.
And then there's a, I know your deadline is April 30th, but then, but, and then 300 Broadway has a meeting on Monday night, too.
Yes.
Is that correct?
I will not be there sadly, but-
Okay, so maybe they'll be able to, to help with some of the pieces and discuss on that.
I can share an update with them based on the, the dialogue and direction tonight.
I've got to have all the money spent by April 30th, so that's going to happen one way or another.
Okay.
You know, I'm, I'm building these walls, no matter what.
They're going somewhere.
They're going somewhere. We want it to be here, but if that doesn't work out, even, you know, May 1st, if you say, okay, we're good now, okay, I'm good, but if it's not, then we'll have to find someplace else, that's all, and I'll have walls out in the store.
While we're in discussion before getting to vote, I, I want to clarify that Genevieve, my partner, is involved in various of these committees and, and pushing this forward and wants this. There's no, like, financial reimbursement, but I'm not going to vote on this because I don't know about those direct ties, and I want to look into this further if I need to be reviewed.
You, you could, you could vote on it. You don't have a direct financial interest or tie in it, so it would be legal for you to vote on the item. There, there's no legal conflict of interest, there's no financial benefit to you.
Likewise, I'm, you know, on Friends of City Hall and, you know, but this is just a request to you to look into it. I mean, there's no, you know-
Right, the, yeah, the document, again, at earliest, my intention would be to have it in front of you by April 4th, the next meeting to-
If, if there's an issue of my vote on it, I would like to know by April 4th.
Yeah, I, I mean, I will verify with Mr. Davis, but likely not.
Yeah.
Likewise.
There's no, there's, again, no financial-
Well, the portions of the building that doesn't comply, they can't use that for tours or, or setting up stuff.
The tour issue is a separate issue that we're working through with Friends of City Hall. They would like to do tours. They previously had an indemnification and old harmless agreement. That agreement is being looked at by both, Mr. Davis and will be looked at by the insurance carrier. There are, there's more concerns there about the protection because of ADA accessibility more than anything, more, more than, you know, personal injury protection, which we can do that easily in an agreement. It's the, the ADA accessibility that's a bigger concern there.
Well, I thought we already had an agreement that they could not use the building at all, the portion that doesn't comply with ADA and fire protection.
There, there was a, a lease, and that lease was terminated in April of 2022.
They've been meeting at the museum instead of there.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just that, I mean, I would think that the citizens would be, feel more comfortable at the, about the building, making a little money potentially instead of, I mean, it's heated right now because it has a fire suppression system in it, just to the minimum, but, you know, it's still heated, and this would at least provide some sort of income and more potential for money, grants, et cetera, to come into the building and, you know, generate more buzz and, and awareness of it from the state and maybe even national level.
Does it have to be roll call?
No.
Not for very long.
All right, no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, on to thirteen administrative reports. Thirteen A, the city attorney report. He is not here, so we'll move to thirteen B for the city manager report.
Mayor, thank you, Commissioners, thank you, thank you, everyone. Longer evening, very good evening. Thank you for all of your input in the engineering portion, again, and its importance, so I, I think we'll, we'll certainly have a winner, no matter who we choose. The Pacer Grant news I shared with you early is, is kind of a teaser, but that was wonderful news for us to know that we do have money that is going to be coming our way to cover that initial citywide assessment of streets, which will then allow us to go forward on prioritizing, evaluating the conditions of the streets, prioritizing and developing a work plan for street improvements in the city. We continue to move along, as was indicated by the gentleman at F&amp;V on the Safe Drinking Water Project, and that is expecting, basically, the approval on that draft portion of the, the plan and the timeframe at any time. I got an email earlier today, and I believe, Jeff, you were copied on it, that everything was submitted, and it's been review after review after review, so we continue to move the process forward, and finance side is being worked on. We should have some information in the next month or so of the more defined timeframe for the bond portion on that, so. And then again, you know, we've started working, and there is a new group that is working through the Chamber of Commerce and will likely be working with the CED Board for business development in the city, and I think it's very encouraging. Was invited to a meeting they had Wednesday of this week, probably fifteen or sixteen people at that, at that meeting from all different areas of the city, so not just Water Street, not just Parker or King, and I think it, if it morphs forward, we'll see a lot of positive things about everybody working together to help, you know, fill vacant buildings and to look at a different direction. And then the last note is, the planning commission received the draft of the master plan and community recreation plan Monday evening. There are going to be some additional revisions that will be made, and as soon as those, which are mostly grammatical and spelling- And as soon as those, which are mostly grammatical and spelling corrections, are complete, I'll have a copy that will be available to you. It will also be available to the public. And in all likelihood, on April 18th, the Commission will officially adopt the draft and proceed with a 63-day review period as required by state statute. So that's all coming in the next couple of weeks. That's all I have for you. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Would it be possible, maybe once you're comfortable with whatever milestone they reach, for F&amp;V to come in and give us a status report? Tell us what they did. Tell us what, you know, I mean, you know, we noticed the trucks around and things like that, and blue paint and everything all over the ground. But I think it would be nice to just have a little neat and tidy summary of, here's what we did, here's what we investigated, here's what we may be found, if there was some, you know, interesting stuff anecdotally. And then here's where we're going.
Sure, I believe, and I'm looking at, I believe that they were planning on coming and doing that in May with us. So, and I think it's in their schedule, but we'll make sure that we get the date out every day ahead of time. Because a lot of this was getting this plan in the hands of Eagle for the review piece. So, yeah, I'll make sure that they do that. And I think it's a benefit for the Commission and the residents to know exactly what's happening. I think mostly they've been waiting on the approval of that timeframe from the state so they don't come and give false information by saying, hey, everybody, this is when it's happening. Oh, wait a minute. No, it's not now, so...
Like I was saying, when you felt it was appropriate, but I just, I think that would be a thing that the community and us would benefit from.
Gladly, thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Nothing else, thank you.
Okay, 13C, reports from department heads. Jeff, do you have anything? Okay. All right, on to 14, Commissioner Privilege and Liaison Reports. And Commissioner Clausen.
Well, I think the city manager, he was there, so the planning commission and the master plan is as he stated. So we're moving on with that. As far as everything else goes, everybody enjoy the snow. We're going to have this live, and hopefully it's done not like they're saying it's going to be. So watch yourself on the roads.
Commissioner Brayson?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Brayson?
Briefly, there was a company that wanted to use one of the buildings in town for a rental office space. And they put this out there to the public that they were interested in doing this, and conversations were moving. And the public spoke, and spoke out loudly online in social spaces with the company, and the company withdrew their bid. I think it's notable to understand that it's not exactly our duty up here to pick and choose companies because we like who the developers are or who the owners are, or choose that they don't because we don't like them. That's not really our role. Our role is to ensure that there's compliance, there's zoning, that there's proper protocol, that when city money is being invested, it's done so properly and above board. And with that, if citizens have concern about developments in town, the best thing to do is to organize, come forward, preferably come forward while organized, so you can have the biggest effect and the biggest change. There are certain roles and responsibilities that we have to follow up here. And it's, it may not always be that clear, but we do appreciate every time someone comes forward and speaks. But there's a lot of work to be done when you're concerned about your community that involves knocking on doors or finding friends to sign a petition or to make a motion and work together. It can't all be done up here, unfortunately, because we are constrained by law and charter and state statutes and so forth that shapes how we can interact with the public and the business community. I wanted to maybe help clarify some of that a little.
Thank you. Commissioner Brayson?
So we did have a 300 Broadway Committee meeting. And in it, we discussed all of the things that were discussed at two Commission meetings ago. One of the biggest factors that we came up with was actually the need to identify an engineering services firm because so many of the questions related to the building, while, yes, there had sort of been architectural studies previously, and, you know, opinions were given potentially by architects that didn't necessarily have all of the credentials to say definitively, this is either the minimum that you'd need or would be the best for the building. Sadly, those studies, you know, were not definitive, conclusive, or we don't know where they are. So, but there is a business plan, which will be discussed at the next meeting. I sadly will be unable to attend. But again, one of the things that we wanted to identify was wait, as the committee, wait to see what the Commission did on hiring an engineering services firm. And once hired, you know, would make the suggestion as the committee that the city investigate with the engineering services firm, the minimum, you know, that's required. So again, you asked a lot of questions that really pertain exactly to the duties of an engineering services firm and the, you know, ragtag bunch of random citizens and, you know, club members and society members that are on that committee are unequipped to answer, although, you know, they could answer anecdotically, anecdotally, rather, where things had been kind of done in the past and what had been done to those degrees. So, again, this meeting, this forthcoming meeting, the chief focus will be business plan, which is one of the things you had asked about. But just to let you know that one of, many of the items would require the tapping of an engineering services company, should the Commission agree to allow that to happen. That's all. Everybody stay safe out there with the impending snow. And again, call us. It is your duty as citizens to interact with us and participate in democracy. Please call us with any of your concerns. We'd be happy to discuss them or bring them before this board. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy? Commissioner Hendrick?
We had a fire authority meeting. We were purchasing a new small pickup. And due to the incident at the PD with the engines on the General Motors products, unfortunately, we are now buying a Ford. So we've had to reevaluate it based on the issues because we didn't want to get caught up in the same problem. But we will be buying one. They're going to get it. It was through my deal, and it still is a good deal for the vehicle. So as soon as we get that, we'll let you know. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Easter.
Thank you.
I had nothing to do with this purchase.
No, no, you didn't.
I just, a couple of quick things. I wanted to thank the three engineering firms that came out tonight. Anderson, Xine, and Westrick, BMJ Engineers, and Plies, and Vanderbrink. I think they're all great engineering firms. I think it's going to be a really hard decision. And hopefully we'll get that decided soon, though, so that we can move forward with the projects that we have waiting. And also, I wanted to thank Jeff and DPW. It's got the new street signs are out, and they're started. And I've already had citizens come and talk to me about them. And not just the sign, the set ex of them, but they said that they've been easier to read, not only during the day, but they're reflective at night. And it's helped some people, especially with, you know, sensitive eyes and driving at night with different issues. They're very clear to read, and they're very nice. Thank you. And I believe you said that they'll start the second loop soon? Okay. All right, so thank you very much for getting that started and going.
Could I say one more thing? I'm sorry. My teenage son, this is how you know how nice those signs are. When your teenage son comes home and goes, Dad, did you see those street signs? You know, it's, there's something special, and you're like, yeah, we voted on those to happen. So thank you again. They really look great.
They are very nice.
So reflective, yeah.
And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.